So, welcome everyone to the Town of Richmond Planning Commission meeting for Wednesday, July 19th, 2023. We will open the meeting. We don't seem to have any guests tonight, so we'll look at the agenda first of all, see if there are any adjustments that need to be made, and it's basically our same two items. We're going to look at the update on the Rogers Lane situation, and then we're going to dig into S-100 so that, Joy, you weren't here last week, but we decided that we were going to have, the planning commission needs to get kind of a grip on it, basically, before we go out and start talking to the public about S-100. So, anyway, so we're going to do that tonight. So, anybody want to make any adjustments to the agenda?
Yeah, two, two small things, actually. One is, I want to share an opportunity with folks to see if, if there's interest in having a, a friend of mine who serves on the Jericho Planning Commission come and talk to us for 15 minutes about an initiative that Jericho is doing to encourage affordable housing. I thought it might be interesting to folks. And then the other one, and this is just something that popped in my head a couple of minutes ago, back in 2011, when Irene happened, I forget how many it was, it was like 20 or 30, only, only a few households actually had water in living space, but 20 or 30 homes had basements flooded and had to replace their water heaters or furnaces. Not so much with, with furnaces or boilers, but with water heaters, there's actually an opportunity to advance goals in the town plan, because there's a drop-in replacement called a heat pump water heater that's an electric low-carbon option that can replace oil or gas water heaters, and it also is very efficient, tends to save people money. There's tax credits available from the federal government, and there's also $300 per unit available from Efficiency Vermont. I was just wondering if there's anything that we could do or, or present to the select board and ask them to do, to encourage folks who need to replace their water heaters now to go in that direction. I don't even really have any idea how many homes this time around, though, lost HVAC equipment. Does anybody have any idea?
I, I would say that it's under a dozen. That would, that would be my estimation, but we haven't gotten that data in yet, Chris, and, and we should know that by next week what's going on. But as far as, as the water heater issue, I, I'll let Virginia and everybody else talk, talk about this. I mean, it's definitely a worthy, worthy comment for sure. And, you know, when we do get the town plan up and running again, we definitely want to start focusing towards sustainability. I think that goes without saying. But, you know, that's my two cents at, at this point, so.
Yeah, Chris, what, what kind of thing would you have in mind? I mean, a publicity kind of thing, or?
Yeah, I mean, I think that'd be a great start, because I think that some of these incentives that are available are not so well-known. Also, it's, at least in my experience, because I got a, a heat pump water heater just about a year ago, actually. It's not the case that every plumber out there knows what to do with them. And, and there's, it would, might be some value to aggregating the work, maybe even going out to bid. Problem with that, of course, is that once your water heater is out, what do you want? You want a hot water as quickly as possible. So, anything that slows that down, you know, is not going to be of, of interest to folks, but it seems like there might be something we could do, at least in the informational end of things, to let people know about the options.
I can, Chris, I can say anecdotally, based on the few houses that we saw on Espinada, that I think three of the water heaters that were wrecked were already replaced with heat pumps, one of which was already a heat pump water heater that was, heater that was wrecked.
Okay.
But I know, I also know that there was, I think, someone, I forget who it was, someone was walking around pitching the idea while the cleanup was happening, and it happening, and I think that the information wasn't ignored, but it wasn't, the timing wasn't well-received. So, that would be a better time. I think it was a low priority at the moment, so.
Yeah, no, I, I totally get the best time to plan something like this is two months before the thing happened.
Yeah.
Like 80% water heaters.
Go ahead, Chris.
Yeah, so, I mean, in, in the best of times, most water heaters are only replaced when they die, and then people want hot water as fast as possible.
I mean, the other people who would be good at doing this would be the Energy Committee. That works on, so, I mean, but that would be, to me, like, the more obvious people to be having a campaign built around what has happened and replacing the heat pumps?
Well, except that, you know, as we were talking about, this is already something that's in the town plan, you know, towards sustainability, and I don't know why, I mean, it, it can't be both? Can't this be something that the planning commission did not also?
Yep. And the same with talking about affordable housing, you know, the Housing Committee is probably a good place also to have someone come and talk about their efforts around affordable housing, because the Housing Committee is kind of struggling with how to promote affordable housing, so that would be.
That was a suggestion that somebody made to me also, is, is that maybe it would be good to invite the Housing Committee to our meeting when we, if, if folks want to hear from our colleague from Jericho.
Okay, great. So, you know, maybe we could mull that a little bit and talk about it under another business at the end of what we're doing. See if anybody has any further comments. Okay, and then there's a couple, there might be a couple of other things under other, other business, but we'll deal with them when we get there to other business. So, if nobody wants to change around anything else about the agenda, we'll proceed with the agenda as published. And look at the minutes of 7:5, July 5th, our short meeting. Any comments or corrections or additions or anything people want to say about those minutes? Okay, not hearing any comments, we'll accept those minutes into the record as written, and move on to the update on the Rogers Lane zoning revision.
Yes, I guess that's my cue. We have letters that have been written and are ready to go out, and they're actually in the outbox right now. They'll go out in the morning. So, what we did is we have those five parcels with Rogers Lane at this point, four of which are residential parcels, and the other one, I mean, they're all obviously in the IC, everybody knows that, and where, and, and the approach is to change this to HDR, High Density Residential, to allow for additional residential construction, hopefully. And we have the one lot, the one parcel, which is 092, RG092, which is the, I can't, what is, what is the name of that company? It's, it's not Blue Flame, but it's.
Patterson. Oh, okay, Patterson, sorry.
The Patterson parcel, and we had talked about having that northern portion of the parcel go into the HDR and the southern portion, which is currently in the IC, remaining the IC, but we need to have that discussion. So, I mean, really, the, the long and the short of it is, is the, the letter is going to go out. Hopefully, we can, we can instigate that discussion with the landowners, all, all, it's actually only four of them, now five, because one, one individual owns two of those five parcels, and we'll go from there at this point. And as far as any updates to the RZR, which is the second point on that, we touched on that, obviously, the map would have to be changed, the citation on the front would have to be changed, but we really don't see any real changes to the actual zoning regulations themselves, because we're just adding additional parcels to, to a district that already exists. So, that's basically the update on hold, waiting, awaiting any reply. I will state that if I do not get a reply on those letters, or for those that I do not get a reply on, I will send by certified mail. But at this point, they're going by regular mail, and with the way that things are going with the US Postal Service, that might be two, three weeks at this point. So, that, that's basically the update. And also, again, it's the summer, you know, we'll see how engaged people are with this, and definitely open to any questions on this endeavor that we're taking.
And so, basically, the content of the letters, the residential lots, the four of them, basically, it just, you know, explains that we want to put these into a residential neighborhood type district. We assume that the Donovan's, who own the one land that the Michelle and Zachary Beal want to build on, will be obviously sympathetic towards this. The other three lots that have Rogers Lane addresses, we know really nothing about, except that they're residential. So, that just explains that. The letter that is going to Patterson, where the tanks are, is slightly different, because we're suggesting, if they're agreeable, to have their parcel be in two different districts, with the northern part being in the HDR, the southern part remaining in the IC, as Keith said. And so, there's a little bit of explanation there as to why we might want to do that, you know, what the benefits would be. So, that, there were two different letters that we wrote, and those are the ones that are going out. We can share them with anybody, you know, if you want to see them, we can put them up on the screen, but that's the basic, the basic message. And that's what we had come to the conclusion at our last meeting, that we wanted to do, if possible, to divide that Patterson lot into two, to make a more continuous neighborhood across the northern end of Richmond there. So, any questions about that? We're kind of on hold to, until we get some reply from the people who are involved, because they're the main ones, obviously, that are affected, would be affected by this change. So.
I, I would add that I, I will forward the templates to the board members. I mean, I probably should have put them up, just didn't have, you know, the bandwidth at this point. If, if the members, if members are amenable to looking at the templates, I could send them to you for your records. It's, it's a quick read, you know, just let, I, I'll, I'll just send it to you when we're done here, if, if that works for you all.
Yeah, we talked about, Keith and I talked about whether we should put them on, up with our materials, which is in a public location, and we sort of didn't think that was appropriate, because they're letters that are going to individuals. But certainly, planning commissioners are welcome to see the text of those letters. That's what we talked about last, at our last meeting. So, any questions about that? I know, let's see, Joy wasn't here last time, but I did fill her in a little bit on what we did. Lisa, you're probably not up to speed on this as a guest. I don't know if you have any questions?
Not yet. I probably will after.
Yeah, it's an opportunity to put some housing. Some people want to have housing, which is currently in the IC district, which doesn't allow housing. So, our options were, should we allow housing in the IC? And what was elected by the Planning Commission was to just remove these lots, which are contiguous with each other, and put them in a different district, basically. This involves no changes to the text of the zoning regulation, just a relocation of their, or a redesignation of these lots as a neighborhood, basically, so.
I don't see that it makes so, any impact outside of these properties, really. I mean, you guys, I've, I've listened to the discussions that led up to this, and you guys reasoned it out very well, I think. So, it seems defensible. I'm not a lawyer, so, you know, always get to see in court, but I think it should be fine.
Yeah, anyway, so we'll get the opinion of the people who are involved, and then go from there. And then, you know, the next step, if everybody's agreeable, is to determine exactly where this line would be between the HDR and the IC across RG0092. So, that might involve some fieldwork, a little bit of fieldwork to look at those properties, or we'll just have to hear what Patterson, you know, whether they're interested in having more IC land, or maybe they'd like to have more housing land in the part that's not very suitable for a commercial use, so. All right, anybody have anything else on that? That's where we are with that project. Okay, so, we're going to move to item number six, which is our initial foray into S-100, which is now called Act 47. And Keith is going to share the screen with the official summary of the act, which you can find under Vermont laws. And what we want to do here is just look at the pieces of this 76-page law that are directly applicable to municipal zoning, first of all. There are 16 of them, and decide which ones of these are going to require us to do something about our zoning regulations. So, we thought we'd just take them one by one and look at them, and Keith and I had an initial conversation about whether we did think we needed to do something, or whether we don't think we need to do something with our zoning. Some things we clearly already have in our zoning, so we're not going to need to do anything else. Others of them, we're going to have to do something, but we may not have to do it, for instance, in the RC districts, because we already had been thinking about that, but we may need to do it in, in new districts. So, so we came up with a, a number of these that we felt we will have to do something, and we thought we'd go through them one by one, and people can ask initial questions. This is obviously not the last time we're going to talk about it, but it's going to be just getting it on everybody's radar, what the things are that we're going to have to think about with this Act 47, which we're now calling it. So, starting at the top with the bullet points, and we're going to make a list where they're numbered, so we can refer to them better. But anyway, the first bullet point, in residential districts served by water and sewer, and by the way, almost all of these relate to districts that are served by water and sewer, so municipal water and sewer. So, if you think about what we have got, we've got the two RC districts, we've got our two potential neighborhoods, village neighborhoods that we've been working on, the neighborhood north and the neighborhood south, and then we have Jolena Court, we have the downtown district, and we have the Village Commercial District. Those are the districts that have water and sewer. So, mainly, those are the ones that we're going to have to alter, if we have to alter them. So, this first bullet, in residential districts, and just, you know, stop me if it's too quick, or you want to say something, or you want to do something else, it's, this is just an initial take on it. A municipality cannot require more than one parking space per dwelling unit in districts served by water and sewer. However, it may require 1.5 spaces in areas without water and sewer, and then there's the question of whether, if existing parking isn't sufficient, only acquired, only relates to districts without water and sewer. We're going to ignore that for the moment, because there's some disagreement about that. But for right now, in residential districts which have water and sewer, we can't require more than one parking space per dwelling unit. So, the question is, are we going to have to do anything about our zoning? In our parking table, we do have some items that would need to be corrected. So, we answered yes to this first bullet point. And I did send you a copy of this in your email, so if you want to make a print out of it and write yes by that first bullet, that's one that we're going to have to look at more and see how our parking table needs to be adjusted. We had put in the parking table that a single-family home needs one dwelling unit for multi-plan, multifamily and duplexes. We said 1.5, and if we can only require one, then that will have to be changed. Jolena Court has its own parking structure, so we need to look at that, and that will probably need to be changed. The downtown district has its own parking structure also. Some of the lots do not require any parking. So, anyway, so we've got a yes for that one. We're going to have to look at the parking. Any questions about that, or comments, or? Okay, the second bullet point. Municipalities must allow duplexes where single-family units are allowed. We're calling that 2A, and that we already have in our zoning, because wherever we have single-family homes allowed, we do have duplexes allowed. So, that part of it is okay. We don't need to make any changes in our zoning for that. Pardon me?
I said, we done good.
Oh, we, we done good, okay. The second part of that, 2B, municipalities must permit multi-unit dwellings with up to four units in areas of the town served by water and sewer, unless the town requires more units to be built. Well, we don't have any of those which require, we don't have any districts which require more units to be built. Some places do, like Heinsberg, that have some districts where you have to build a certain number of units. They want them to be high-density areas. We don't have any of those. However, we will have to permit multi-unit dwellings with up to four units in areas served by water and sewer. This is going to affect the neighborhoods. They're going to have to have those. And in the RC districts, we're going to have to look at whether we made them conditional or permitted uses. And if we made them conditional uses, then we would have to make them permitted uses, because it specifically says they have to be permitted, which means they have to be permitted uses. So, so that is a yes for part 2B. And this is obviously going to be controversial and possibly non-popular, but it's a must, so. Okay, the third one, requiring towns to subject accessory dwelling units to the same standards of review as single-family homes, and prohibiting towns from making the criteria for detached ADUs stricter than for single-family homes. We feel that we are already in compliance with that. We don't have any different standards for ADUs, except for the standards that are inherent in the definition of ADUs, which is they can only be a certain size, a certain square footage, and those other requirements that the owner has to occupy one or the other. So, but as far as any other standards, like dimensional standards, they're the same. So, as far as we know, we're okay with that. We don't have to do anything. We get down to the next one, one, two, three, number five. In residential districts, oh, wait, four, I skipped over, municipal zoning cannot prohibit hotels from renting to those using housing assistance funds. We don't have any regulations about that at all, so we are not prohibiting it. So, we feel we don't have to do anything with our zoning about that. That's fine. We're fine. We can have hotels raided, rented to anybody, so. The next one is number five, in residential districts served by water and sewer, bylaws shall establish building and lot standards to allow five or more units per acre. So, this is the other one, like the three and four-unit buildings, that's just going to be controversial and possibly not popular. So, we will have to have five units per acre in the RC districts. We already have eight units per acre. We're okay there. We will have to address this in the neighborhoods, the five units or more per acre, which is like one dwelling unit requires 8,500 feet approximately. So, that would be the language that would go in, as opposed to whatever else we were suggesting for the density in those, in those neighborhoods. And there's a little bit of a question about exactly what the part that says establishing building and lot standards to allow it, if we write it in as a density allowance, is that satisfactory? But you all can think about that. Anyway, so that would be a yes. We need to do something there. So, so far, we've got the three yeses of ones that are going to need our attention. Yeah, Keith?
And we're, and we've gone through five so far. Is that what I'm getting? And, yes, okay. But keep in mind that number two is, is kind of a, there's a no on the first part, and there's a yes on the second part. But, you know, it's just the way this is set up. Just want to let you know that. So, yeah, we're off and running.
So, we've got a yes on one, a yes on 2B, and a yes on five so far. Okay, we get to six, in residential districts served by water and sewer, affordable housing may add additional units, up to 40% of the density, and may add an additional floor or not. So, this one got a yes, because we don't really make any differentiation between affordable housing and non-affordable housing anyway in our zoning. So, this is like calling out us to make a comment specifically related to affordable housing that reflects this statement. And the may, the question is, what that means, you know, like, may add up to an additional floor? Does that mean if it's not okay with our fire department, then we don't have to do it? So, anyway, we think that that will require further looking at and some, us to make some change to the way our regulation is written. All right, the next one is seven. Municipalities may define what areas are, quote, "served by municipal sewer and water infrastructure for the purpose of these changes." Well, it turns out that is not very simple. There's like a two-page list of things that may or may not allow you not to consider something, a water and sewer district, even though you thought it was in the water and sewer district. Things like capacity restraints. What if your water and sewer district is totally used up already? Well, then you consider that you don't have to make these changes related to the fact that it's in the water and sewer district. It's complicated, and both Keith and I gave it a question mark, because we need to read it and understand all these factors. There's like two pages of factors that might allow you to waive some of these if you actually can't get people water and sewer. So.
Or, or conversely, if the allotments are all used up, I, I believe that they're, they're talking about this also. But again, we need to delve into that, because it is a bit complicated. So, to be, to be revisited.
There's a lot of double negatives with it, you know, if it's not this, then you can not prohibit it, you know. And there are a few situations, like Jolena Court will have some allowances already made for their units that they're going to be built, so those are Um, and there are a few situations like Jolena Court will have some allowances already made for their units that they're going to be built. So those are kind of already taken up, but we feel we still have other capacity. Anyway, so that gets a question mark. Okay, number eight, limiting the aspects of a homeless shelter that can be regulated in town zoning, including bylaws that cannot limit their daily and seasonal hours of operation. We don't have any regulations relating to uh, homeless shelters that they're calling emergency shelters. So we don't uh, conflict with it in any way. So we don't feel we have to make any changes there. Okay, any questions so far? All right, going on to number nine. Requires that specific information be submitted to the Department of Housing and Community Development. When municipalities adopt new zoning bylaws or update bylaws, including uploading bylaws and zoning districts to the state database. We don't have to make any changes. This is something that is going to have to be a key thing that he reports these things according to this. If we make changes to the bylaws, then there's a reporting requirement. We don't say anything in our zoning document itself about this.
Yeah, I mean, it it does refer to the statute um, within the zoning regulations and then it's it's basically a perfunctory move. But it's an administrative uh, issue more than anything. And I'm not sure why they're highlighting this, but it's there. Um, and uh, you know, I I guess there have been towns that haven't done that um, in the past. So, but just to let you know, that's a perfunctory action that this office has to take once we do the amendments.
Okay, the next one, the one at the bottom of this page, which is number 10. Which says, under the provision that gives any 10 voters, residents or property owners in town the ability to appeal a zoning decision prohibits the ability to appeal the character of an area. So, you know, this law wants to not let people say affordable housing will destroy the character of the area. They want that not to be able to happen. But what we have in our appeals section of our zoning is just basically a statement that says you have to go and look at the state statute. So the state statute will be updated with this statement. And you will still have to go and look at the state statute. So we're going to look at that a little bit more again to make sure we don't want some point of information in there for people to look at. But basically we're okay the way our ordinance says, just go and look at the state statute. That is still going to be the case and it'll just be a different state statute that people are looking at. So, all right. So going on to the second page, there's just a few more to go. The one at the top, number 11 allows towns to give their administrative officer the ability, the authority to approve minor subdivisions and decide if a hearing is required for minor subdivisions. We don't need to do anything because we already have that authority. I don't know, Keith, if you want to talk anymore about that, but.
Yeah, the only expansion of that is is that that authority is already given by statute. Um, and I'm not understanding why this is even in there again. Uh, I look at Huntington and and you can do it in Huntington, you can do it in, you can't do it in Charlotte, you can do it here. Um, but you have to have a certain, you have to have 25 acres or more. It can only be, uh, you know, two lots subdivision. Um, so minor subdivisions typically are two lots or less, or you can't be less than two lots and it's not subdivision, so. Uh, so I mean, this is good. I mean, it it does give the administrative officer a little bit more authority. It does remove a bureaucratic uh, level um, for for uh, towns that don't have this authority and we can, we can um, adjust this if we need to at some point, but that authority is is given regardless. Um, I think you know, as we're going through uh, specifically the HD, not the HDR, but but the AR because those are the larger lots and more subject to subdivisions. May we may want to give more authority to the administrative officer, but at this point in time, you know, that's a discussion for the future. So I I don't see this really changing anything in our zoning regulations. So we do have that as a no.
Okay. Then the next one, number 12, really seems to us to be a repeat of number 10. It says it clarifies the existing law that the character of the area cannot be appealed in decisions on certain types of housing. And the certain types of housing are, if you read the text of the law, ones that involve affordable housing, either a project that is entirely affordable housing or a residential project that includes affordable housing. So once again, it's restating that the character of the area can't be appealed relative to affordable housing, basically. So we've said no because we just refer you, if you're appealing anything about the zoning, to the state statute. And if we want to change that and put more detail in there, that's fine. But right now we just kick you over to the state statute and whatever that says is what is. The next one is also a little complicated. Establishes quote, by right zoning, which requires an appropriate municipal panel, which we think is the DRB, to provide reasons for adjusting dimensional requirements in permit decisions on housing. So what we believe this is saying is that if you have a project, a residential project of housing that requires some adjustments in the dimensional standing, standards in order to be built. Like, let's say you have a five lot, I mean, a five dwelling unit building. It has a lot of parking area that's needed. You can't meet the coverage or the setbacks. That it allows the DRB, as long as they give reasons for it, to alter those dimensional requirements without asking for a variance. This so far is our interpretation of this, which would be a change.
And and I would add that that would be something, um, definitely would want to uh, have an answer, collaboration with council on this because this is a pretty, pretty big change uh, to allow, you know, buildings to be built within the setbacks without a variance, which again is uh, is is a hurdle uh, of bureaucratic hurdle that is is um, taken out. Uh, so I I look at it as a good thing, um, unless you're a neighbor that's affected by it. But you you know, it has to go to a public hearing and all that, so.
And the DRB, you know, would need to understand that for residential projects, if they have good reasons for it, which they're going to have to create somehow and you know, maybe understand what a good reason for it for allowing those setbacks or coverage to be altered. They're going to have to make those kinds of decisions, which they haven't so far. You know, basically the DRB looks at the setbacks and says, and the zoning administrator looks at them and says, here are the setbacks. You have to meet these setbacks. This appears to be giving the DRB the freedom to alter them with reasons which are what? I don't know. We need more housing, whatever. Um, Lisa, you wanted to say something?
Yeah, a question that maybe you don't know the answer, but that by right zoning um, change in dimensional requirements, would that would that kind of back propagate across that zoning district by default? Or would it just be, could they, could it somehow be limited to just the applicant's uh, parcel or parcels? Uh, it seems like that could get out of hand real fast.
Yeah, well, I mean, one of the things that we need to investigate more is what that actually means by right zoning, you know, I mean, if you say, for instance, by rights, when you can have a single family home, you can have a duplex. That's a form of by right zoning. But what this, in this context encompasses, I don't think we've really figured that out yet. So the answer to your question is, I don't know.
Your answer, I don't know.
Well, yeah. But that's one that's gonna, it's gonna need work, you know? I mean, it's gonna need work to really understand what that means and um, maybe legal advice as well, so. Okay, so, but we think that's probably a yes. We're going to have to make some changes to our zoning. We believe that's probably going to be a yes. It's just exactly what the changes are. I mean, at a minimum, it'll be changes in the DRB's ability to do certain things. You know, there's a whole section of our zoning, which is the DRB. What does it do? What can it do? What is the procedure that it has to go through? We would have to look at that and make sure as the appropriate municipal panel, that they have the correct instructions for this. Okay, number, the next one, number 14 requires additional detail in the housing element of regional plans and municipal plans. So when we come to redo our municipal plan, which is not too far down the line, we need to look at that section in detail and see what it is, what additional information we need to put in there in the housing element. I think one of the things that I remember the actual law, the complete law saying is you have to have a plan. You have to have numbers of your goals for housing and a plan of how you're going to get there. So, you know, that's going to be some work, but so that's definitely a yes, but it doesn't relate to the zoning. It relates to the plan.
That's something that the um, meeting with my friend on the uh, Jericho Select Board might be uh, useful for, because that's one of the things they did.
Mm-hmm. Yeah. Yep, that sounds, sounds promising. Um. Okay, so that's that one. That's a yes, but only with the plan. Number 15. Removes the ability of rural towns to require changes to bylaws be adopted by Australian ballot. Any town may still choose to use Australian ballot. Actually, Chris, this is a question you might know the answer to. Did Richmond ever vote to be a rural town? And if it voted by Australian ballot to be a rural town, did it also vote that for any bylaw amendment that was proposed, Australian ballot had to be used? Because if so, forever on until it's unvoted, that has to be the case. And we want to just make sure that Richmond didn't do that. Because otherwise the amendments that we voted on would really have had to be voted on by Australian ballot. So somebody knows about this somewhere in the history of the select board, maybe 2012, I don't know. I don't remember either of those things, that the town voted to be considered a rural town. Any town between 2,500 people and 5,000 people can vote to be called a rural town. If we voted that way, then the other thing is true. They're taking that out of the statute, so it's no longer true. So going forward, we're okay. It's just going backwards. What was the history? I don't know.
Yeah, this isn't ringing any kind of bell for me. Um, not that that means anything. It's been a long time since I was on the select board, so.
Yeah. I know what you mean.
I'm trying to think who would know.
Hmm, I I wondered if Bart or David would know. I mean, it could have been anytime in the last 20 years, they could have voted to be considered a rural town and to have to vote everything by Australian ballot.
Yeah, I mean, Bart or David would be a place to start. I guess the other question is, is if a town does that, how do they have to register that they've done that? Do they have to file something with the state? Is there somebody that we can check with in Montpelier?
Yeah, maybe. Anyway, we're looking into that.
It would be part of the charter is my understanding. Um, and um, that's something that I have on my list to do with Josh and now, you know, we'll reach out to Bart also somewhere we are.
Chris, when were you on the select board?
Oh, it's great you asked me that. Um, I have to figure this out. I know I was on during Irene, so I was on in in 2011 and probably for a couple of years on either side of that. So I think, I think it's been about 10 years since I was on the select board.
So you would have been on the select board when the 2012 zoning went down by Australian.
Oh, yeah, I was, yeah.
But the question is, did the select board just vote for that one vote to put it to Australian ballot? Or did they decide that everything from here on in was going to be by Australian ballot?
I do not recall anything that blanket happening. I I think my my recollection is that there was a a promise that was made that you know, gi- given that it was all being prepared and presented as a package, the entire zoning rewrite, that that it would be done by Australian ballot. But I don't recall there being a sort of a blanket change that would require all such modifications to be, but again, a long time ago.
Right.
You know, so.
Yep, okay. So we're going to research that and see if historically, and that doesn't have anything to do with our changes that we're going to need to make to the zoning. It just is about the past, basically, and what we've already done. So, um, anyway, so that's that one. That was number 15. And then number 16. Allows the Department of Housing and Community Development to use up to 20% of municipal planning funds. There's nothing that we have to do to change our zoning about that. It is um, something that if we want to have a neighborhood development area designation somewhere, then we would want to consider that, obviously. But it's nothing that we have to do immediately. So I think we ended up with about five or six that are yeses that we have to change, which is going to be um, the topic of our next conversation about this, unless somebody has something different that they want to do with this material. Those are most of the ones that affect um, our work. Um, obviously, there's some other ones that you know, talk about Act 250, but they don't really relate to us, that talk about the CCRPC. They don't much relate to us. Um, there's the energy ones that you'll be interested in, Chris, that relate to the CBs and the RBs. There's a committee that has to be formed to recommend how we can improve our um, compliance with the CBs and the RBs. So this, this statute actually forms quite a number of committees. I mean, I don't know who's going to do all this work, but there you are.
Maybe we can get uh, Heinsberg to create a uh, a special branch of the police, the energy police and, you know, have them serve for. I'm joking, I'm joking.
Yeah, right. In their spare time, when they're not doing any other kind of policing type of work. All right, um, does anyone want to talk anymore about any of these? Or how would you like to proceed from here? Our thought was probably to talk more in detail about the ones we gave a yes to, make sure the no's are really no's. make sure the no's are really no's, look into the question mark ones. And then what? You know, do we then feel like we have an understanding of what we need to do with our zoning enough to make a, uh, suggestion of how it would actually look? For instance, in the neighborhoods? Or we could try to decide which parts of the zoning are going to be affected by each one of these? So, Joy?
Uh, Virginia, I'm curious, is anyone, or is the state offering any sort of education or assistance with this coming out? I mean, I feel like, you know how we sometimes get a grant for like, somebody to come in and help us with planning, or is that, have you heard anything like that?
Go ahead, Keith.
Yeah, no. Basically, um, I, I mean, there are, there are grants out there for, uh, help, for, to hire consultants to, to help rewrite your zoning. Um, and we, we could potentially pursue that, but I mean, we, I mean, you have staff here to, to help along with that. I would, I'd be totally amenable to that, that goes without saying, but there's nothing, no riders attached to this legislation as far as I know.
Okay, I just, you know, I'm wondering if we're gonna do all this work when we could potentially be focusing on other things? If the state was gonna help out implementing it, like, are we jumping the gun, or?
So it's, it's due, the deadlines for these changes is July first, twenty twenty-three, which we've already had. So zoning administrator is going to have to work according to these changes already, even if they're not in our zoning, is that correct, Keith?
Yeah, that is, that's correct, as it would be with any statute that comes down the pike.
And when did they take effect? Cause I thought some of them didn't take effect for a while, like another year.
Well, the municipal ones take effect July first, twenty twenty-three.
Okay.
The ones where there's a committee that's formed, like the Energy, the CBs and RBs, greater compliance, that is gonna take effect next year, basically, because I think that report is due in December of twenty twenty-three. So, um, and then the Act two fifty ones, you know, the regional planning ones, et cetera, have their own dates, but they're not, um, relevant for us. The one that requires us to have a more detailed housing element in our town plan, we are thinking that we can do that at our next, um, you know, our next reiteration of the plan. When we come up, we're gonna have to start doing that in twenty twenty-five anyway, so we figure we can do that then. But I don't even know if that's really correct or not, but the other ones, the municipal zoning changes, July first, twenty twenty-three.
Is there a, a snapshot of all these deadlines somewhere?
A snapshot of what?
The deadlines that you just outlined, are there, are there, is there a page or a little grid somewhere that has all these spelled out?
That I don't know.
It would be helpful for us to kinda have that as a little cheat sheet, like, okay, what do we have to do first and?
Well, pretty much all the ones that we have to do, except for the plan one, we have to do by July first, twenty twenty-three.
Well, it's not so much that we have to change our zoning to reflect that, it's we have to administer it at that point. I mean, I mean, you, you can't update the zoning that quickly, and, and that's not the intent of this. We do have to administer it like we would have to administer cannabis, like we'd have to administer accessory on farm businesses. Um, we'd have to administer, um, the, the ADU statute that came down the pike. Um, we just haven't updated it in our zoning at this point, um, and those are basically what I term as technical fixes. It's not, but, but from an administrative point of view, they are already active. So, uh, we, we have that.
Yeah, so basically, the goal is as soon as we can to make our statute require, you know, the things that are required by state statute, so that people don't come and read our zoning regulation and then find that actually something else is required by way of state statute. So it's good to, as soon as we can, mesh the two and make sure that they're in compliance with each other. And the reason that we're working kind of on it now is because we're trying to work on these neighborhood districts. And we might as well put the new stuff into the neighborhoods, since we're working on them, we might as well put it in now. So that would be what we would like to understand, what we have to get in place in those neighborhood districts. And, you know, I have taken the ones that were yeses and made a copy for myself of what the last draft of our neighborhoods looked like, if it had those things incorporated. There aren't that many changes, you know? I mean, you have to have a density that is five acres, five units per acre or better, you have to have that. You have to permit three and four unit multifamily houses. So in your permitted uses, you have to add three to four uh, multifamily dwelling buildings, you know? There, there aren't that many really, that there's a few that are kind of a little more complicated, but mostly you just have to add these few things into your zoning. And the, you know, like I said, the reason we wanna do it is we wanna get these neighborhoods done, so we can move on to the rest of the districts. Might as well get them incorporated now, since they're due now. So Joy, I think as soon as possible is just the way, you know.
Okay, I just, for some reason, I thought that the deadline was much later, so.
Yep. Okay, um, so, do we wanna talk more next time about the specifics of the ones that we've identified as yeses? Or do we want to call in the neighbors and try to explain them to them? Are we ready? Do we feel like we have enough of a grip of it to have people come in from these neighborhoods where we're trying to put these things in as a start? What, what do you think we can do as a next step? What would be best? What would you like to do as a next step?
I mean, it seems like we have a reasonably clear idea of the ones that are gonna be most controversial, what the impacts are gonna be. So, I mean, uh, suspect the uh, density requirements and the multifamily requirements are gonna be the most controversial by far, and those are pretty clearly laid out. So, um, some of the more, uh, less understood, or some of the less understood stuff, at least by us, is, um, probably not gonna be as controversial, so we should just get the neighbors in and start talking to them, I guess, I mean, I don't know. Maybe, maybe I'm, uh, being optimistic, but it seems like since it isn't coming from us, that maybe we will not quite be the lightning rod that we couldn't be otherwise. And again, maybe we will.
That's optimistic, yeah. Yeah, well.
At least we can point the finger at someone, so.
Right, the state did it. Um, so, I mean, one thing that we could do is we could, you know, Keith and I could work further on, for instance, okay, multifamily, three to four units have to be permitted. So what has to happen where? In each of the new districts, the neighborhoods, we have to put it under permitted uses, we haven't done that yet. In the RC districts, we have to see if it's permitted or conditional and make sure that it goes, you know, that would be a change that we would have to make in a district that we've already worked on. So, and in the Village Commercial District, we haven't really worked on that. We have heard from Dan and Heidi Borman that they don't want any residential uses there, but we have to, you know, we haven't worked on that district yet. So we just could lay out a program of where these things would have to make the change. So anyway, one more meeting without inviting people or inviting people to talk about it with the districts, I think are our options. I think Lisa had a question, but.
I, I rethought it, and so I pulled my hand down, but I guess in general, there's gonna be some controversy that comes from this, I mean, no matter how we approach it, no matter what it's about, there will be controversy. So maybe it's better, excuse me, maybe it's better to get it out in the open first. And if by rare chance there are any really good ideas, you know, that come out of the discussion, then we get to incorporate them or use them. But, uh, I, I, my sense is it's gonna be confusing to the public. Uh, I'm not sure I could explain it either, either, so. Um, you know, confusion can tend to fester, so if we get it, uh, get the confusion out on the table and start dealing with it, it's usually better.
Right, but it would be good for us, as the Planning Commission members, to feel like we understood it. You know, because we're not gonna be able to explain it well if we have a lot of questions ourselves remaining about how it would work.
Right, maybe it just becomes a question and answer where, um, we ask the questions and the public can give the answers or change. Uh, and then go back and digest what we've maybe learned and then, uh, use it if we can. I, I'm not sure, this, this is really new.
Yeah.
I guess my question would be, do we think there's anything that's so controversial here that it's gonna run out of control if we don't have a hundred percent grasp of all the issues? And I haven't heard anything that sounds that way to me, but that's just a gut feeling, you know?
I agree with you on that, Chris, I think the things that are gonna be the most controversial are also, they're also laid out pretty clearly. So while they might be controversial, there's no like,
Right.
It's not really any leeway in our end, so it could be a little bit of an event session, but the sooner we get that out of the way, the more people can digest that. implemented, because I mean, we were all shocked by it, you know? Uh, and now we kind of all realize it's just what's going to happen in every town. And I think the sooner we do, we, uh, give everyone else the opportunity to kinda get over the shock, the sooner they can realize. Yeah, that, you know, the, the, the more time between when we first, they first find out and when we actually implemented the, the less shocking it'll be when we turn it over to the Select Board and make them the lightning rod.
Yeah, I, I would, it's, it, it's extremely important that, that every member owns what's going on with this, because the last thing we wanna do is not be in lockstep, um, especially if you come in and, and, and folks are hell-bent. You know, on this mandate, you can't force this down our throat, well, you know, well, unfortunately, we can. We're, we're not overly happy about it either, you know, losing that local control. Um, but we've gotta, we've gotta own these, uh, 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 you know, this whole mandate. I mean, we've gotta own that, we, we can't be looking, uh, silly or, or not educated, I think that's, that's my point.
And we can call in Janet to talk about it too, if, uh, if people seem interested.
Well, Janet doesn't know very much about it. We did have her come in at the time, we didn't actually have a meeting, but she came in and talked to those of us who were there. And she was not on the committee that worked on it, she knows less than what we know, I would say.
Yeah, I think based on, imagine she's moved on to other things now, we've been, uh,
Yeah.
Keith and Virginia have done a lot of digging, and so we're probably much more in tune with what's going on than she is at this point. I would feel bad having her come in and be the lightning rod too, that seems.
Yeah, fair, fair enough, um, I'm just saying that if it gets to the point where people are agitated about it, I mean, that is her job, so.
It's true.
But, but I don't, I'm not talking about throwing her under the bus, I mean,
Yeah.
You know, let's, let's, I, I, I'm just thinking a lot a little bit here.
Yeah.
I mean, I guess my, my, uh, idea, my, I don't know, I'm not, I haven't seen how these things go poorly and everyone else has, cause I'm sure there's been controversial topics you have all addressed. But it seems like inviting everyone in and us talking about it, explaining that, you know, it wasn't how we would approach it, but we've been given a mandate, and so it's what we have to do, and it's what the town has to do, and it's not just us, we are a part of the town and we're all gonna make it happen together. And then if it goes extremely poorly, then we can, um, you know, bring Janet in to explain that, like, no, this is a, a mandate that state gave to us, and we have to do it. And it's not really, uh, it's not a discussion, it's an informational, informational thing, so.
Yeah, though I think the thing that we should be ready to do, and particularly if, if Janet wasn't that close to the sausage making here, is to be able to give people an idea of the context, this was an arbitrary, you know, this had specific policy objectives in mind. And so we should be able to express those and say, you know, because of what, um, you know, whether there's a, I, I, I mean, often there's, you know, explanatory attachments to the legislation. I, I, I don't know in this case whether there was, or whether there was a statement that was, you know, issued by, um, you know, a state official, you know, with the passage of this or sport or with the passage of this, to be able to explain to people why this is happening.
Yeah, well, so in the testimony, so I read a good amount of the testimony that was presented at the hearings. And it is all about the fact that for years, these ideas have been recommended to towns to allow for more housing, because we have a housing crisis, all right? So we don't have enough housing, it's scarce. These ideas have been recommended to the towns, they have not done them. They have not allowed more housing to be built by overly restricting to single-family residences the ability of people to develop housing. This is why they did this, was to mandate it so that you would have to allow multifamily housing and greater density. So that was a lot of the testimony that was presented. Was about the house, housing scarcity.
I read the same thing, and it seemed like, you know, the, the mentality was very much, uh, we gave you the opportunity to do it however you wanted, and you didn't. So now you're gonna do it, whether you like it or not, you know?
And that these are reasonable, these are reasonable compromises. You know, like, we didn't say you had to allow twenty units to be put everywhere. We are saying you have to allow three to four units, this is the missing middle, housing, the small multifamilies. You have to allow it, it doesn't change neighborhoods, you can't say that it changes the character of the neighborhoods. So, you know, those kinds of things were the compromise that was arrived at, because the state really felt it had to do something about the housing crisis, there aren't enough houses for people. They're either unavailable or unaffordable, and the state felt it had to do something, so this is what they did. Everybody didn't like every piece of it, who gave testimony, you know, different aspects were brought up that people weren't that crazy about, but this was what it sifted down to, this is the compromise that it sifted down to. So, you know, it's what we can do about allowing more housing. And we had already understood that this was coming from the housing consultant, who was a grant to the Housing Committee. She made a report, she said, this is coming down the pike, and this is why we put some of those things into the RC districts, was because it was recommended that this was coming. And sure enough, it came down the pike, and now we just have to more broadly apply it. So I think if we can stress that this housing situation, you know, is untenable, and this is what we can do about it, and this is how we can help with it, maybe that'll make people feel better about it. Clearly, we're not as far back as some towns, who haven't even allowed duplexes where you have single-family homes, you know, the national planning information is that single-family home zoning has created the crisis that occurs across this country. People wanted to have single-family homes on their own lots, and they zoned for it, and they didn't allow anything else, and they tried to keep everybody out else who didn't want that. And this is what has happened, is we don't have enough places for people to live, so. You know, at least we're better off than that, we allow duplexes already, and, um, you know, so. Anyway, okay, so for our next meeting, how do you wanna frame it? Do you want to say that we're inviting people in who wanna hear about Act? say that we're inviting people in who want to hear about Act S one hundred, Act forty-seven?
Yeah.
Okay. So we can do that. It's not a public hearing, but it's, you know, we can bill it as um you know, we can bill it as a session that will help people to understand this new law that has come down that we have to incorporate into our zoning document. Everybody good with that?
Informational session, or, I mean, uh, I guess, I don't know what's what's the, I don't know. We try to steer away from a hearing because that sounds very formal.
Because and we're not, you know, it's not about any specific thing in the document that we're having a hearing about. It's an informational session. It's just this is our new law that we have, S one hundred, and we want to explain to you, you know, what it's about and let you ask questions. I mean, you know, it's not like we want to ask you if you like it or not, but it's just that we want to let you know what's in it and what we're going to be working with as we proceed forward with our zoning.
This, I I would add that this this may be a recurring agenda item at this point. Um, you know, basically, again, we're in in summer. Uh, I'm just trying to figure out how would we put that on an agenda? Is this a special session in the future? Obviously, we can discuss that, Virginia, um, and Adam, however we want to do that. Um, but I I I do perceive this as being a continual agenda item, so people can uh chime in and and there might be some synergy over time where more people will start to come to the meetings.
Mm-hmm. Well, you know, more people will probably start to come when we talk about the neighborhoods, when we say we're now going to start incorporating this material into our revision, you know, our updating of our zoning regulations. And we're going to start with Village Neighborhood North or South. Uh, then those people will probably come to hear about it. But this would be a way to at least introduce it, to tell people we're thinking about incorporating this now. We must incorporate it into our zoning, so this is going to be informational about what it's going to include. Joy.
I am anticipating what I would be thinking as a resident in those neighborhoods, which is please list out for me what is S one hundred and what is the planning commission, that we're going to have to literally do sort of two lines or two columns. This is what was mandated by the state, and this is what we've done. We're going to have to start separating those. We already did a bunch of work on it. Almost highlight it or have it in red, like, these are S one hundred. This is not us. Um, just a thought as we move forward.
I I was sort of thinking along the same lines, that that I think that's an important distinction to make, but also just in general to to make these meetings productive. I think having a presentation where you say, what are the highlights? The highlights of S one hundred, you know, what is it trying to achieve? But how is it going to affect you? You know, and and then, as Joy said, what the state has done, what the planning, what the Richmond Planning Commission is going to do in response to that. And and, you know, basically, um, you know, prepare it, because I think if we just come and say, you've all probably heard of S one hundred. What questions do you have? We're going to get a lot of sort of non-productive smoke grinding, I think.
Yeah, well, we're never going to do that. I mean, we can't even do that at the planning commission level. We have to have a presentation, right, that people can bounce off. If we had just started this meeting by saying, okay, S one hundred, what do you people think? That wouldn't have gone anywhere, right? So, you know, I think
But we we don't require it to be quite as digested as I think I'm talking about for the public.
Yeah. Yeah, well, so what do you think about the idea of introducing the concepts a little bit like we did tonight to the public without attaching it? I'm thinking a little bit of Kathleen Gent's letter, which said she really wanted to understand it before, and she thought people would want to understand it. Before we put it in the language of the district that we're suggesting in the draft, because she didn't want people to become attached to that before the people in the district had a chance to look at it. So I'm a little bit reacting off that by saying, let's introduce it to people and say, we're going to have an informational session. And then we're going to start introducing it into these districts that we've been working on, and we'll make a mock-up that has what we had before, and then in red or whatever, these things that we're going to add in. Yeah, Joy.
I think we should also create maybe a page on the planning commission's um website or on the town website. And when we put something in front porch forum, we say, for those of you who can't make it to the meeting, these are the highlights that we're going to present. Um, so it gives people a chance to do some research before they come to the meeting and or if they can't make it, they can look at it online.
Mm-hmm. Okay. Okay, anybody else?
Yeah, I would I would I would think a slightly more um digested and refined version of what we went over today would be a good starting point to both put out for people to review and then go over in person. And I think having people be able to look at it a day or two, or even an hour ahead of time takes hopefully, a little bit of the emotion out of it, so we can have a productive conversation.
Mm-hmm. And, you know, I don't think we necessarily have to present to people all of the things that we don't have to make any changes with. You know, there are only five or six things that we have to actually incorporate into our zoning. We can tell people that there are a number of other things that we already are compliant with. Um, that can be a short list, maybe another list to show that we're it's not a lot of, you know, it's only telling us what we have to do, but it's telling us a lot of things we've already done already. We could do that. Um, and then a short list of, here are the fairly easy to understand things that we are going to have to do to our zoning. It's a short list, so. Allison, I think you had your hand up.
I I did, and and I'm afraid that my brains are kind of occupied by something else today because being at my swimming pool business, um, I've, of course, had uh visitors from all over the community and some other communities too. And I guess that I I just want to say that this recent flood that we've had, the recent terrible storms have had profound effects all over our community and around the other communities. And as I look at the number of people, like, on Cochrane Road is closed, there's so many uh, other roads that are closed. There's a big chunk of Huntington Road that was carved out by the Brook that in the area that was just recently rebuilt. It's just right above Heinsberg Road or that intersection there. And the number of difficulties of people just getting around that I just, I guess I have to say that that the idea of increasing the population um, is a little scary because uh, our infrastructure right now has uh suffered enormously from this really historic flood. And I don't know that it hasn't bearing on this meeting, but I guess I just have to say that with what I've been through the last several days and with people coming to my house and telling their stories, um, there are a lot of people out there that are our neighbors that really need help.
Yeah, well, I mean, in
I don't think it has that much to do with this particular decision.
Yeah.
That's been occupying my mind, and when I think of developing more in the village, um, that scares me a little bit.
Yeah, so we have this statute that we have to comply with. So we need to try to do it as carefully as we can, obviously, thinking about all these things and you know, I mean, it brings up the point of whether we, as the planning commission, should really be thinking about whether the stormwater infrastructure that we have is suitable, you know, or or what what changes should we be thinking about with the zoning in terms of managing the stormwater? Anything like in these neighborhoods? Should we be asking people if they had any trouble and if there were flooding and, you know, then we should be really thinking about that? That was you know, that what you have said brings up that point. And the other point is, are people ready to engage with this right now? You know, are they all still thinking about the other things? And maybe we should not do it, but it does kind of hinder
This happened all of a sudden, you know, this storm, this happened all of a sudden. I also, given the traumas in Montpelier, I wouldn't be surprised if some changes in point of view happened in Montpelier as well. Um, but and of course, we can't predict that. We have to respond to what we have here. But I just wanted to mention this, that this is a historic event, and it may have some profound effects on our planning. That's all.
Right, we have to decide how to deal with that, though. I mean,
Yeah, yeah, right, right.
Thank you, Allison. I think that's a good general reminder. And I and and Virginia, I took it the way, the second point that you made is that when we think about, we want to schedule this discussion, maybe giving people a breather, you know, right now, I think people are distracted by the things. And then, you know, and looking at the calendar, we are getting close to August. Trying to do this in August is never a good idea, you know, so you know, just thinking in terms of when when are people going to have uh, had a chance to clean up a little bit, you know, the 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 people who are affected by the indirectly affected by the flooding get themselves organized, and when are people going to be not out of town? Um, we should take that into account too. But the thing that um you know, I I want to say about that is that uh all of all of the issues that we're talking about, about housing, um and and about climate change and the effects that we're seeing now are very interrelated, and it's the people who are in an inadequate or marginal housing who are most affected um, by the flooding here, by extreme heat in other places. And so I think that's an aspect of this that we need to weave into our discussion as well.
So, I mean, it sounds like your underlying thought is that we should get on with allowing more housing.
Absolutely. Well, I I think that, what's the alternative?
Right.
Yeah.
Yep. Well, so we can get on with trying to allow more housing, or we could have um a discussion next at our next meeting that recognizes that we understand that that it's been a problem, the flooding has been a major problem, and that we're not ignoring it and just carrying on as business as usual with our agenda. But we could talk about what the planning commission should be doing, if anything, you know, maybe look at the stormwater regulations. I don't know, Keith, what what is our responsibility exactly with the stormwater regulations, the planning commission? Do we have any or?
Well, no, not not really. I mean, that is a state function more than anything at this at this point. Um, the DRB is is the ones that could actually affect change in that regard, but they, again, don't have really jurisdiction over stormwater. Now, so uh, the the big overarching issue is, like you say, climate change and the way these stormwater regulations uh, were were designed, at least they 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 began being promulgated in the seventies and eighties. And um, things have changed. I mean, it it's it's just become more and more intense. And they have to resize everything. Anybody who's lost a culvert, this this go-around knows that those culverts are not the right size. Um, and so uh, that's one little issue right there. So the the large part of it is is we have the responsibility to make sure our stormwater is in place. That certainly is something that that development can can uh look at. Uh, you you folks said that build houses, you know all about erosion and sedimentation, and you know the limitations of erosion and sedimentation. When you get under to a storm every every forty years, or in this case, every every what, eleven years?
Ten years, yeah, right.
I mean, you can't plan for that. Um, you just have to become more resilient. You have to harden everything as much as you can, and we're not even talking about, you know, sea level rise. I mean, that's a whole nother issue, but you know, this is a planning commission. This is the, I mean, we're charged with planning. And planning by nature is looking at the future, and I think that anything that has to do with stormwater should be in the mix. There's no doubt about it.
Yeah, I mean, I think that traditionally, there've been sort of two areas, and I don't know if it's all the planning commissions uh purview, but but culverts, a lot of it does come down to culverts in the end. I think we're very fortunate. I think the highway department has had a program of upgrading culverts for over a decade now. You know, things would be a lot worse than, not that they were bad, but they would have been a lot worse this time uh, had not been doing that. The other thing is making sure that the flood maps are reflective of reality uh, to some extent. That was a big issue during I following Irene, and I don't really know what the status of that is now, because that then that's one that that definitely tends to hit home for folks because it can really restrict what they can do on their properties. People who had no idea they were in the floodplain suddenly are. Because flood
Yeah, to answer answer your question on status, Chris, um, you know, ostensibly, these new firms or oh, the the flood maps, basically, um, they're they're due to be landing in twenty twenty-six, you know, that's a federal program at this point, and uh, you know, from the last I heard, they were supposed to land in twenty twenty-one. Um, so I'm not sure what's going on with with with, you know, it actually happening in twenty twenty-six, but that's the target date. Um, you do have two individuals that are going through a a floodplain management training. We've already gone through that, and we're we're planning to get certified soon. Uh, I tip my hat to Tyler with his response to this and the town, uh, you know, this last go-around, but this is not going to be the last time. I think we all know that. Uh, but I agree, Chris, that the firm maps are are definitely adequate.
So is there anything that we need to be saying about the streams, for instance, on personal property? I mean, I was wondering about this, if if people, what if people have streams that, you know, we haven't ever been able to get a right, any kind of a right an actual riparian for streams, for seasonal streams, any kind of um ordinance about that? Maybe that is something that we need to think about again, but you know, people who have streams running on their property that run down to the road, for instance, I mean, should they be required to manage those streams or to keep them open or?
They can't build within fifty feet of of a of a of a bank or a shoreline. So, I mean, that's a state mandate. Um, but
Well, that's only rivers and lakes and things. It's not the streams. Not all our little streams.
If if it's if it's a named stream, it is. Um, but if it's an unnamed stream, that is correct. There there is no regulations on that. I mean, you you can, you can certainly, you know, uh, entertain, you know, having a stormwater portion of the uh, regulations. Um, yeah, it it's it's based on what the state mandates for the most part of this. I mean, we we can go, we can, we can be more um, robust than ours, you know, but the state, again, is the floor.
Yes, my one uh hesitation on that, I think it's a great idea, and I think that on Friday, I saw catastrophic flooding and water that I wouldn't have normally ventured into if someone wasn't over there. Uh, in places where there had never been water before in my lifetime. It's pretty scary. But at the same time, we are talking about affordable housing and stuff, and uh while requiring people not to build near streams in areas where there may be flooding, seems obvious. Uh, there's no way for us to determine that, and there's no way for the DRB to determine that. And so it does necessitate pretty significant uh engineering and or A and R um, consultation to make that happen. So that is going to be a pretty big hurdle in a lot of places to any type of, not even affordable housing, but just reasonably priced um, housing. Um, never mind capital A, affordable housing. So, well, I think it's a great idea. I suspect that the cost benefit may be ultimately much more impactful to our community in a negative way than it would be in a positive way. Um, just kind of um, based on my previous experience with the regulations and stuff, and then looking at the regulations and stuff and then looking at, you know, where there was water on Monday night. I mean, there, there's, we would never have limited building in places that would have flooded. We would never expected that. And I think that if we were to look forward ten, five, ten, twenty-five, thirty, fifty years from now on where there's going to be water, I mean, I don't think it's in, I don't. I think it's a noble goal to try to limit development in those places. I just don't, I think we might limit ourselves. So we're going to arbitrarily pick something. And I just don't, I don't even know who any of us had the expertise or would even know who to call in to how to. I don't think there's that expertise really anywhere to predict fifty years from now where we can have massive flash flooding on at our pools that we didn't even know existed, so.
Yep. Well, we certainly know that climate change is going to be expensive.
It's not going to get better, yeah.
Not climate, you know, not doing anything about climate change is also going to be very expensive. So, you know, it's going forward, going to be a challenge to balance those things, I think. Lisa?
Oh, thanks. This, this is an interesting discussion. I'm glad I tuned in. You know, I'm thinking of places like Southview Road, Jericho Road, Huntington Road that have washed out or had major problems that were built to a, what was expected to be a good standard and failed. And, you know, just as Adam was saying, we're, we're learning some things about our limitations that we didn't even know before. And we can't really expect the state to provide us with the tools to fix that. And I don't think we expect ourselves to provide ourselves with the tools to fix that. So where is that fix going to come from? And I don't even know who to pose the question to. You know, our resources are finite and those are everyone else's. But whoever said it, climate change continues and it's going to get worse. And we're going to see water in places we haven't seen yet. That's pretty scary. I mean, our road, our road was impassable, washed out. We're 500 feet above the town. Our road was gone. So this is gone, literally gone. So that's not something I expected. Anyway, that's, you know, if there's a way that we can keep ourselves in front, out ahead of the narrative and put that, put the answer to that question onto developers who propose to develop parcels that aren't currently developed. That at least keeps us from having to provide the answers. I mean, it doesn't help really if something goes wrong. But I, I think if we can avoid being put in the position of having to provide those answers or make the changes for the future that then turn out to not work, I think we're better off. Because you're right, we're trying to predict the future without really knowing what we're up against. So just rambling a little bit there.
Yeah, well, I mean, to Adam's point, it's all going to make housing more expensive. But there are some things that people do know that they can do better, like putting in bigger culverts. You know, you've got to put in bigger culverts. If the, if the culverts are not adequate for the flows that we now see, then the road crew is going to know that. They're going to know how to do that. They're going to, you know, their engineering of roads knowledge is going to know how to do that supposedly. So, you know, I think there are changes that are going to be made by different people. And the question is, is there any changes that we need to make as a planning commission? Maybe not. Maybe the answer is not. It's.
Right. We might have a harder time defending them, you know, rather than just ad hoc changes made by people who know what they're doing, you know, on the land.
And I mean, clearly we would have to have help making, you know, somebody would have to be able to talk to us about it, but. Okay, so for our next meeting. A more refined list? Is that what we're talking about with just the yeses on it? And where the changes we would be needing to make those, where exactly in the zoning? We want to have that conversation amongst ourselves. Would we like to say that it's going to be an informational session? It's going to be a work session, but we're inviting people to come and hear about this new law that we're going to need to be incorporating? Is that what we have decided we want to do? Okay, well, so I guess we'll go there. And you know, focus on the fact that it's trying to increase the housing, which is something that we need places for people to live, even though we have to try to do it carefully so that, you know, a lot more people aren't in harm's way. And it's such a conundrum because, you know, so many villages in Vermont are made in the valleys. That's where they were made.
So, so, yeah, we can work on, on that aspect of it, the S one hundred aspect of it for the public. As far as getting it on as a, as an agenda item. Chris, at the beginning of the meeting, you know, wanted to talk about getting an individual from Jericho in. Do, do we want to do anything along those lines also at this point? Or do we want to kick that off to the housing committee? Again, the housing committee is on once a month or twice a month. We can, we could certainly. I don't know how long this individual would need, Chris.
Well, I think, I think it's up to us. So just a little bit, not to be mysterious about it. This is Sue Breezy, who is on the planning commission in Jericho and has been for a while. And she's one of several commission members that was sort of championing housing and particularly of trying to respond to the, to the Chittney County goals for housing, you know, and, and, and getting serious about Jericho doing its share. And what happened up, up there was that, and this, this is, I think, as much it sounds like, as much just by the town suddenly seeing an opportunity and taking advantage of it, town bought land. And that became available and then entered into an agreement with the developer to develop affordable housing on the land. And it's not that that's what we should do. It's just more to hear about how a neighboring town took action and addressed it. I thought it might be interesting to folks. And Sue was more than willing to come and talk to us for ten minutes or twenty minutes or whatever people want to hear.
And would you like to come to the housing committee to talk about it? I mean, that is exactly what their mandate is and they're looking for their next steps.
Yeah, well, I think it'd be good to, but how do we get the most bang for the buck out of this visit, you know? And I think if there's a way to get maybe both committees together, that would be ideal.
Okay, so we can work on that. We can see if the housing committee would like to do that. Maybe they meet on now the fourth Wednesday. We meet on the third Wednesday. So we could see if they would like to maybe come to our meeting on the third Wednesday instead of the fourth Wednesday.
Yeah.
Probably easier to get them to come to our meeting than the other way around.
Always.
Yeah, there's, there's, it starts at five thirty. Our start's at seven. So that's where we're at, we're there. All right. So yeah, we just so happen to have a housing committee meeting next week. And we could bring that up at that point.
Yeah, we could bring it up and see if we wanted to put them in one of the August meetings for the first part of the meeting, like the seven o'clock component of the meeting.
Let's just make sure that we're going to have turnout.
Yeah, well, that's good, yes.
It is August.
Make sure everybody tries to come all the time because we don't have much margin for error. So, you know, we understand people can't come sometime, but we don't have, they don't have a lot of margin for error. Dan Mullen did submit his resignation. So we have a vacancy which we would like to fill. Then we have six people and we need four. So hopefully people will come to the meetings that we could.
Okay, so I've got, I've got a couple items here. It sounds like that should take up the meeting. I don't know if anybody has anything else to try and.
Can I say one thing quick, Keith?
Yes.
Back, back to our, sorry, back to the previous thing we talked about with the flooding and stuff. There was actually a kind of a timely recorded brave little stamp episode where they talked about our streams and rivers and the history of Vermont and the shape of the landscape and all that. And there's actually some, it was interesting to listen to, we listened to on our job site. And we're talking about like, you know, everything's, everything's flat now. Everything's mowed. The streams and rivers are straight, whatever. And there's a lot of history there about that not being the case and how we've done that historically and how we can undo it. And there's a lot of really high level pointed things that would actually mean a lot to us if we're going to address this in some way, whatever that may look like going forward. So maybe I'll get Virginia to send the link out, but it's, it's a good twenty-five minute listen. And it kind of really addresses what we've done to the landscape, why, and then why that wasn't right and how it's kind of screwed us recently, so.
Yeah. And I mean, I really saw that with the stream on my property, which roared down the hill. But then at the bottom of the hill, it had a lot of open land to spread out and it just spread out all over the landscape. And so it was slowed down, which helped there not be flooding more at Johnny Brook. Because this is a branch of the Johnny Brook and you could just see that exact thing. You know, the stream wasn't straight and it just went everywhere across the land. If the land hadn't been so wet already, it would have been even better, but land was already wet, but made a million channels.
The biggest, anecdotally, the biggest thing I remembered from it was that there used to be some ungodly like eleven hundred beavers per square mile in Vermont.
Yeah.
So to give a perspective of what the landscape used to look like relative to what it is now.
Sixty-seven beavers per square mile.
Sixty-seven, that's what it was. It's still a massive amount of beavers per square mile.
So really, it's up there, yeah.
Okay, so I think we've got a program for our next meeting, which will be on the second of August. And if people know they're going to be away, you should let us know as soon as early as possible that you're going to be away. That we can not. And thank you for coming, Allison. I know you have long days with the pool in the summer.
I do.
You can come and have a restful listen to these discussions.
Well, I, thank you, Virginia. I, I am honored to be a part of the group. And, and this whole idea of planning has meant a lot to me for many years. So I, even though I came barreling in a little late, I'm here.
Here you are, yep, with your good perspective, so. All right, great. Anybody else have anything they want to say? Any other business that we need to take care of or? I did want to just mention that probably at least six or eight months ago, I sent to the airport the plan that we had said we would put in our zoning. And to hear what they had said, they have never replied, so.
Oh, interesting.
Yeah, never, never said, maybe in a few years they'll say, well, we don't like this or we do like this. But it was like, this is what we're going to put in our zoning and that's it. That's the end of it. I've never heard anything else from it. And we haven't put it in our zoning yet because I was waiting to hear what they had to say. Anyway, that's the update on that.
No, thanks, thanks for that. I, I still remember that, that presentation. And I don't think they were quite ready for us.
No, and they offered their help and we're like, no, we'll do it. And we did, and we sent them something and, okay, whatever. And it's what, what Williston has in their zoning. So maybe they thought, oh no, now Williston is going to revisit it if we have any negative comments to say because it's what they have too. So anyway, so. All right, great. Well, I think we're ready for your motion, Chris.
Move to adjourn.
All right. Is there a second?
A second.
Adam's second. And it's ten minutes to nine. That's great. If nobody objects, we will be adjourned. I don't hear any. Good night. Thank you.
Good night. Good night, everyone. Good night.